Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the business meetings for the City of Prattville this evening. We do have two public hearings tonight, and then we will move into our regular agenda for the evening. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll for us, please?
Counselor Sanders.
Yeah.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Chambers.
Here.
Counselor Merrick.
Here.
Counselor Whaley.
Here.
Counselor Stritchett.
Here.
Counselor B.
Having a quorum present, I will read in public hearing number one. Item number one is a resolution to authorize the mayor to have overgrown grass and weeds at 132 Linna Drive, 170 Imogene Street, and 141 Beth Manor Drive abated, and charge any incurred expenses for this abatement process pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to speak in favor of resolution number one? Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to speak against resolution number one? Hearing none, I close public hearing number one. Public hearing number two is an ordinance, an ordinance to rezone the property which is located inside the corporate limits at Grooby Airport Road and Aviation Way, from FAR Forest Agricultural and Recreation to T1 Manufactured Home District. Is there anyone tonight who wishes to speak in favor of ordinance number two? Yes, sir, please come forward, state your name and address, and if you will sign up at the podium first, then come forward and state your name and address, and address the council.
My name is Ronald Johnson, and I currently reside at 289 North Northington Street. The land that I am seeking to get rezoned is family land. It's been in my family for at least four generations. That's where I grew up, and I'm just looking to go home to retire and enjoy my retirement, and I would appreciate a positive vote on this.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the council? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of ordinance number two this evening? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against ordinance number two? If you will state your name and address for the council, and then address this, please.
Yes, ma'am. Brad Bulger, Prattville, Alabama. I'm sorry for my tardiness this evening. I had some work to do earlier. I am actually here to speak in opposition to resolution one, two, three.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bulger, we are not at that point right now. We are dealing with a public hearing, so if you would wait just a few minutes, we will have another opportunity for you to come forward and present those comments at this time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
No problem.
And addresses on the, I've already signed up, so is that good?
Let me ask our clerk, will he need to sign again?
Do I need to sign again?
You don't need to sign again, but they're not coming.
Is there anyone further who wishes to speak against ordinance number two of our public hearing? Hearing none, we will close this public hearing. At this time, we will invite you to stand for our pledge of allegiance and the invocation which I will give this evening.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we approach your throne tonight, knowing that you are full of grace, knowing that you are a fair and righteous judge. Thank you so much for the opportunity to live in this community, where we can do business openly before you, and where we can participate in this type of government. We ask that we would honor you in the things that we say, and the way that we say them, and the decisions we make. I ask that this panel would come before you in advance to seek your wisdom before we make decisions for our city. Give us that wisdom. You tell us in James that if any man asks for wisdom, that you will give it to us graciously and not in a condescending way. We are so glad that we can ask that from you as we like it ourselves. Bless our business tonight, and bless this audience as they go home in their separate ways. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll for our regular meeting, please?
Counselor Sanders.
Yeah.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Chambers.
Here.
Counselor Merrick.
Here.
Counselor Whaley.
Here.
Counselor Stritchett.
Here.
Counselor B.
Having a quorum present, I do call our meeting to order. Our character trait of the month is humility, acknowledging that achievement results from others' investment in life. At this time, we have an opportunity to approve our minutes. Our minutes come from the public hearing and the public city council meeting on July the 15th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, file a like sign, and the minutes are approved. At this time, we will welcome comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda only. We do have two comment programs, two comment portions of the meeting tonight, and this first one will be only for things that are on the agenda, things we are voting on tonight. During the second comment time, we may address other issues, but if you have something to address tonight, Mr. Bulger, this will be a time when you would come forward if it's something we're voting on. So if you will start here, if you will line up against this wall, sign up here on the podium for us, and you will have three minutes to address the council at this time.
Thank you. I am here tonight to speak in opposition to resolution one, resolution two, resolution three, let's see, resolution four, I'm sorry, I just got this copy. I know, I tried to download it a couple of days ago to be more prepared, but I'm late. Also, resolution four, resolution six, resolution seven, I'm requesting you guys to vote no on those, all of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bulger. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on anything on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we will move ahead. Mr. Mayor, do you have a report tonight?
Yes, ma'am. It's good to see everyone again. Good evening, counselors. First off, I want to let everyone know that the traffic light at Tara and McQueen Smith Road is up, and we'll be operating on Thursday for the first day of school for Otoga County schools. This was supposed to be up and operational in April, and we all know it's August. I hate to say this is just a sign of the times with our supply chain, workforce, and the weather as well. I ask everyone to please use caution in this area, as traffic is out to the light and in all school zones. I want to wish all the teachers, students, and administrators a wonderful school year. I know we have two teachers right up here, and thank y'all for your service to this community. It's hard to believe that the summer is almost over as everyone heads back to school, and I appreciate all the educators for their dedication to molding the future leaders of our community. I know for a lot of the educators, summertime is not always a break time either. You're always still working, preparing for the next year. I'm thankful for the partnership that we have with our Otoga County Superintendent. As I was preparing for some of his speech, I started thinking that my tenure here as mayor, I've been through five different superintendents. Mr. Faulkner, Mr. A.G., Mr. Tidmore, Mr. Boyd, Dr. Boyd, and Mr. Whitman, and I hope Mr. Whitman is around for a very long while. But community partnerships do make a difference, and we're so grateful for the generosity of two amazing community organizations helping make Spillway Park even better. The Prattville Civitan Club, Representative James Jones presented a $1,200 donation to purchase a handicap-accessible picnic table bench for the park, ensuring everyone can enjoy this beautiful space. Also, the Prattville Millbrook Sunrise Rotary Club, under the leadership of President Jessica Sanders, has approved a $3,800, $3,800 district grant to partially sponsor the lighted walkway from Fourth Street to Spillway Park's entryway. Their contribution can help with string lights, poles, concrete, and electrical panels to make the walkway safe, inviting for all. The Prattville Parks Recreation Department is incredibly thankful for these partnerships that continue to improve our parks and create spaces the whole community can enjoy. Counselors, as we all know, on item number two before you this evening, which is the Growing Alabama Funding Agreement, this is an infrastructure-related grant in support of Project Magnolia, which we plan to announce in September. We're looking forward to making this positive industrial announcement, but at the moment, we're still under a very strict NDA. I guess I have some other good news, bad news, and I think by now, most everybody knows when I start off like that, it means some type of paving. Councilman Sanders, it looks like you're the lucky guy tonight, because another local paving project is coming soon. We will be opening bids on Thursday for what we were calling Phase Two. This project will include the paving of Northington Road, in which we're also receiving $338,000 from the Rebuild Alabama Act grant program to go towards this project. So hopefully, that bid will come in, and we can move forward on that project. The construction of the new public safety training building is almost finished. Some of these projects have just been taking a lot longer than what I think we are accustomed to, but they still have a few items to complete, and I will let each of you know when we'll be having grand opening and a ribbon cutting. Counselors, there have been some comments about the accessibility to our audited numbers. Our current audited financial numbers are on the city website. I've been able to navigate them myself, but anyone that is having issues, please reach out to me. I know one item that I find of interest and of importance on page 14 of that audit is audited statement of net position, i.e. a balance sheet. It sheds light on the city's financial health. One key component, one key component of this statement is the unrestricted net position, similar to the unrestricted equity in a private business. The city has made significant strides since 2010 in improving its net position. For example, unrestricted in a decipit in net position of $46,000, $46,256,000 in 2010. Our unrestricted net position now is a positive of $21,385,000. That was in 2024. That is an improvement in net position equity in 14 years of $67,642,000. Just say all that, because when I was looking through the audit again, that sort of caught my eye, and maybe that would be open to some other folks as well. But I would like to say the City of Prattville has been making investments in our community for decades, investments that continue to pay dividends today. One early example was extending a sewer infrastructure to an area maybe not commonly known to some, Exit 179. Some of us up here might remember it as the Holiday Inn Exit. That forward thinking moved open the door to significant growth in that corridor, particularly in our tourism, hospitality sectors. In the past, many of our shopping dollars and family experiences went across the river, but thanks to these investments, those dollars are now being spent right here at home, supporting our local businesses, creating jobs, and strengthening our economy. One of the most transformative projects was the city's $6 million investment in the Robert Trent Jones Golf Trail. That decision has propelled our local economy and elevated Prattville as a destination for visitors across the region and beyond. I'm proud to say that since 2011, we've added 10 new hotels, clear evidence of sustained confidence in Prattville's future. You know, these are just a few reminders that when we, the public and the private sector, invest in our city, the returns are real and lasting. All these put together have contributed to Prattville's new and now solid financial footprint. Madam President, end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do any counselors have any questions or comments for the mayor at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at this time, we will move into reports from the council on special committees. Counselor Sanders, do you have a report tonight?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Jackson?
No.
Counselor Chambers?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Merrick?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Whaley?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Stritchett?
Nope.
And I have none. At this time, we have the opportunity to create a consent agenda. Items that might fall within our consent agenda this evening include resolution number one, which is to authorize the mayor to have overgrown grass and weeds at 132 Linna Drive, 170 Imogene Street, 141 Beth Manor Drive abated, and charge any incurred expenses for this abatement process pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution number two, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 1142 East Main Street, aka 1157 Falk Avenue, a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution number three is to declare the garbage and rubbish at 135 Warwick Drive a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution number four is to set a public hearing to declare the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at 1142 East Main Street, aka 1157 Falk Avenue, 1385 Twins Place, 819 Wilberforce Avenue, 333 Janice Street, and 810 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive to be unsafe and a public nuisance, and order their abatement pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution number five is to appoint Stinson Kennedy to the Industrial Development Board. Resolution number six is to declare the garbage and rubbish at 810 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution number seven is to declare garbage and rubbish at 175 Patrick Street a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. And resolution number eight, to appoint election officials for the 2025 municipal elections. Do I hear a motion to create such a consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of creating this consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, file a like sign, and the consent agenda is now before us. Do I hear a motion to adopt this consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda before us? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting this consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, file a like sign, and the consent agenda is adopted, allowing us to move into our regular agenda for the evening. Item number one on our regular agenda is an ordinance to rezone property located inside the corporate limits at Grooby Airport Road and Aviation Way from FAR Forest Agricultural and Recreation to T1 Manufactured Home District. Ordinance number one was previously read in at the July the 1st, 2025 meeting. It is now properly before us. Is there any discussion regarding ordinance number one this evening? Hearing none, all in favor of ordinance number one, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, file a like sign, and ordinance number one is adopted. Item number two is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into the Growing Alabama Funding Agreement with the Alabama Department of Commerce. Counselor Whaley, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas the Growing Alabama Program is a program that is vital in preparing sites across the state of Alabama for future development, which is one of the key considerations for businesses looking to build new facilities or expand current operations. And whereas the Alabama Department of Commerce administers the Growing Alabama Program, and all applications are approved by the Renewal of Alabama Commission, and whereas eligible projects for the Growing Alabama Program include site preparation and infrastructure improvements on public land for industrial use, and whereas a Growing Alabama credit application was submitted to Commerce to cause the site preparation and/or infrastructure work to be undertaken on real property in the South Industrial Park, and whereas the Renewal of Alabama Commission approved a Growing Alabama credit allocation in the amount of $4,900,000, and whereas in reliance on the application and in consideration of the anticipated economic impact, increased tax revenues, job creation, and other benefits to be received by the state, the parties have agreed to enter into an agreement, and whereas this Growing Alabama Funding Agreement is made and entered into by and between the Alabama Department of Commerce and the City of Prattville. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby authorizes the mayor to enter into a Growing Alabama Funding Agreement between the Alabama Department of Commerce and the City of Prattville for said credit allocation in the amount of $4,900,000 for South Industrial Park. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. Madam President, I so move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number two? Hearing none, all in favor of resolution number two, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, file a like sign, and resolution number two is adopted. Resolution number three is to ratify and affirm and authorize the mayor to enter into a School Resource Officer Agreement with the Otoga County Board of Education, ACBOE. Counselor Whaley, will you introduce this resolution for us as well, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas in Resolution Book 2021-A, page 210, on November 16th, 2021, the City Council approved an agreement with the ACBOE for school resource officers, and whereas said agreement expired on January the 11th, 2025, and whereas the ACBOE desires to continue the agreement to help protect teachers, students, and support personnel during school hours, and whereas the City of Prattville desires to assist the ACBOE by providing full-time sworn law enforcement officers to provide the services of school resource officers for schools inside the corporate city limits of the City of Prattville, and whereas the City of Prattville and the ACBOE desire to enter into an updated School Resource Officer Agreement to provide said services, and whereas the ACBOE shall reimburse the city 75% of the salary and fringe benefits of each school resource officer for the term of said agreement, and whereas the term of said agreement shall be for a period of three years commencing on January the 11th, 2025. Is that?
Now therefore.
Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council, the City of Prattville hereby authorizes the mayor to enter into agreement with ACBOE for school resource officers that ratifies and affirms said agreement terms starting January 11th, 2025, through January 10th, 2028. Be it further resolved, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. Madam President, I so move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a lot of seconds. Is there any discussion on resolution number three? Hearing none, all in favor of resolution number three, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, file a like sign. Resolution number three is adopted. This concludes the items that we have on our agenda tonight, which does bring us to the section of our time to have our second comment section. So we invite anyone who wishes to speak to the council to please sign up here at this podium, line up along this outer area here. You will be able to come forward and address us for three minutes. Are there any closing comments tonight? Yes, sir, Mr. Bulger. Please come on back and sign up the second time, if you would, just so that the clerk has a record that you were here more than one time.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry, that's a question for the clerk. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I get nervous speaking publicly, but I kind of wanted to bring it to y'all's attention that there's a couple of us in this town that are ready to get a little community organization or something going to help anybody that is struggling with lawn upkeep. And so here's the thing, and there's only one or two of us talking about it right now, but what we would like to do is actually take these lists ahead of time, and let us reach out to these people, and let us see what kind of issues that they may be going through if they're stopping. A couple of weeks ago, my wife and I were able to get the agenda a little bit earlier, and we actually drove to all these houses. I would say 90% of them are abandoned. A couple of them may have been commercial properties. We're not worried about that. But what we are worried about is the two residents that I came across. One of these guys just moved here. He had a really good job over in Mississippi as an electrician. He was making, you know, good money over there. His company got bought out, or they lost a contract. He moved in with his sister here in Alabama, and they can't afford a lawnmower. And so I went and talked to him for a little while, and it's a $500 charge that this guy's facing. And I believe that if y'all would just allow the citizens to take that portion off the government's hand, and let's reach out to these people, let's just see if there's any issues going on. There could be a disabled vet living there. It could be somebody that's got health issues, money issues. It ain't none of our business what's wrong, but if they got a problem, I think the compassionate thing would be to reach out to these folks. And one reason I'm passionate about this, especially considering what's happening to the Robinson family, and most of y'all that know my family know that my grandparents were taken advantage of. They had somebody steal their house, and I don't want that happening to somebody else, you know? And I hate what the Robinson family has had to go through over this last year, and I really feel like I'm, look, man, there's folks here that's willing to do anything. We'll, I mean, if we got to start another Habitat for Humanity or whatever, I'd, let's do it. But let's get the government out of people's business. I think that private citizens can take, and I'm sorry if my time's running up, y'all, but I do appreciate y'all's attention on this, and it's something I'd love to reach out to y'all and actually talk to y'all individually about this. And I promise you, I'll be nice. I mean, I know I got two personalities. One of them's Bob Ross, and one of them's Rick Ross, and I can't control that all the time. But I do want the opportunity to sit down with y'all and share some of these concerns in a pleasant manner, and I appreciate y'all listening to me tonight.
Thank you. It sounds like you're speaking from your heart, and we appreciate that very much. You might want to get with our code enforcement.
Do you mind if I say one other thing?
Very quickly.
Yes, and I'm sorry. I had 52 when I walked away.
[laughter]
One other thing, and this is an issue that I have, is the fact that this is going through the police department and not the fire department. I believe that if we're doing code inspections particularly, that should be handled through the fire department. And the reason I say that is because, and I don't know if anybody's here from the fire department, but most fire, who that?
Whaley.
Mr. Whaley. And I'm only speaking this, I've worked in the fire safety industry, and I've worked as an electrician for 20 years. I used to do business in Prattville. I stopped doing that probably about a year ago, right about the time the Robinson debacle happened. I started, I stopped taking customers here, and that's personal reasons. But your firemen, they go through NFPA training. Most of them are, they understand NFPA 72, 15, 25, you can name, 101 is a big one. And just having, and I'm sorry, 101 is, I'm nervous, Life Safety Code. Our firemen actually have training to look at a building and see, hey, these trusses are sagging in a certain way. They have to know that stuff, because they go into structures that are compromised. So I feel like the inspection portion should be handled by somebody other than the police department, and that's just, I mean, to me that makes sense, but I've only been in construction. I've never been in law, and the only fire training I had was in the military. So we didn't do that, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. I believe Mr. Whaley may want to address that.
So first of all, Mr. Bulger, thank you for coming, and thank you for your thoughts and your foresight to try and develop something to help the citizens of the community. That's commendable, and we need more people to be involved in that type of activity. One of the, just to address a couple of things, and I'm not trying to debate anything, we will look into it a little further.
No doubt.
So the codes that the fire department inspect and enforce in NFPA codes, there is a property maintenance code, but these particular instances that we're dealing with here come out of the city ordinances.
Okay.
So it's an ordinance, so the code enforcement division is there to enforce the ordinances, and they are not, if I'm correct, sworn police officers. They are hired as code enforcement officers. They just happen to be managed under the umbrella of the police department.
Well, and that's, I remember Ed Paul, the former fire chief, him to kind of explain that to me, why that is, because a fireman, it's harder to teach a fireman constitutional law.
Right.
It's easier to teach a policeman building codes.
Right.
And I do understand, just like I said, I've got some ideas on how this might be done a little bit different, and I just want to make sure that if it's somebody that's actually struggling with an issue, that we as the community come in, not the government. I mean, I feel like there is some overreach when we tell people, now, if there's snakes coming out of their property, yeah, that's a danger to the people around them. But like I said, a lot of these houses I went to, and they're mostly in specific neighborhoods, and I do worry about targeting. And I go through a lot of nicer neighborhoods where construction's going on, where you see two-by-fours piled up for months, and also commercial properties. I'm one of these, I come in and look at the discussion rings. I look at your fire alarm panel when I walk in to see if there's any code errors. And there are city buildings missing, and I'm speaking mostly to you, I understand, but FTC caps that are missing. That's one of the most dangerous things people don't think about, discussion rings missing. You know, that's in city buildings, and we as the citizens don't have a right to say, we're going to bulldoze City Hall because one of their valves is closed and not supervised, right?
Right. So I would suggest, yeah, I would suggest that as soon as you have a plan for this group, and I may be interested in helping somebody who really has a need, if once you're ready to move forward with that, that you go and take that information to the mayor's office and say, hey, can we get with code enforcement before it enters into this process? Because at this point, there is an ordinance, and these are all garbage and rubbish and overgrown lots. So 90% of those are, somebody complains that, hey, my neighbor's grass is waist-high. So if I'm representing that person, and they call and they go- So if I'm representing that person and they call and they go, hey, you got to do something. My neighbors, they've got crap all in their backyard, their grass is high, they're not taking care of it, then in my opinion, what I am supposed to do is try to help the constituent that's there that wants me as their representative. So it's not, I don't see that as government overreach, because if I say, well, I'm sorry, you just deal with the tall grass, there's nothing I can do about it, well, then I got to deal with them at that point. So there could possibly be some things that a citizen group could do some really good for people who really need it.
Okay.
And I would say, if you get to that point, share that with the mayor's office. If it gets to code enforcement, I'm the chair of the Public Safety Committee, and code enforcement is under the police department. And if it comes to it, and the city is good with that, the PD wants to discuss it, I'm willing to have a public safety committee meeting and talk about that with the police department and code enforcement in a public setting where people can be there and see what we're saying.
Well, I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward, state your name and address. For the council, you will have three minutes to address us.
I'm Rachel Bulger. I live on Spanish Hook Drive in Prattville, Alabama. And I'm here to speak about the newly formed Political Action Committee, Prattville Deserves Better. I'm one of the representatives of that PAC. And I want to dispel some myths about that PAC. I want to be clear, we're not affiliated with any organizations or entities, nor do we align with any particular political party. We are a diverse group of Prattville citizens who care very deeply about our community and believe in the importance of transparency and accountability in our local government. Our core beliefs are these: Residents deserve to understand how decisions are made; Public spending should be traceable, explainable, and responsible; Every Prattville voice should matter, not just the loudest ones. When we formed this PAC, we made a good faith effort to meet with every candidate, both current and declared, and to discuss everybody's platforms and priorities. Councilman Wayley excluded because his seat is unopposed, I want to put that out there. Every mayoral candidate and nearly all declared city council candidates accepted our invitation. However, only one of you spoke with us, that would be Councilwoman Jackson, and we are appreciative of that. And it is this kind of blatant disregard from our representatives that created a need for an organization like us to exist. Because these meetings are not designed for dialogue, and we understand that, we wanted to offer an opportunity for meaningful conversation regarding the upcoming election. Prattville Deserves Better is hosting a meet the candidates forum on Thursday, August 7th, from 6:00 to 7:30. That's going to be held at the North Highland Community Center. We sent formal invitations to all the candidates, and again, without, with the exception of Councilman Wayley, because he's unopposed. We have received timely responses from Councilwoman Stritchett, Councilwoman Jackson, and Councilwoman Boone, and we are grateful for those. And to all of you who have not yet responded to us, I was going to personally invite you because maybe there was an error with the email correspondence. So we understand that prior engagements can prevent, is going to prevent some of you all from attending, but we also are offering an alternative to that in-person forum by way of a written response or a video response. We're going to have questions by the, we're accepting all questions from the community that are not going to just be our questions, we're actually opening that up. We want questions coming from all the people. So we would offer that to you all to answer those questions. And we feel that the only way forward for Prattville is through engagement and meaningful dialogue with those that seek to represent us. There's a lot of citizens.
Ms. Bulger, I ask that you wrap up quickly. We are running low on time.
Yeah, so many citizens feel as if their voices are not being heard. I want to invite all of the people here to come to that. We have, I have flyers, and we're going to invite everybody to come. Again, we invite you all to come, and if you can't be there, we invite you to find another avenue. We've got some other avenues for you all to participate. Participate. Dialogue with us.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Alyssa 2022 Summit Parkway. I found, just through searching, just crazy, I found the 2040 Comprehensive Master Plan from Prattville. And before I get started, I just had a quick question for the mayor. Did you read it fully and did you sign off on it? Yes or no? And if you don't have to answer, I'll just take that as no, you didn't read it and you signed off on it. Okay. So it's going to be a little disorganized here because this is like last second thing. But this is a very interesting plan because it starts off very strong. It's announcing all of our concerns, it's like addressing like need for bold leadership, our education, it's like, it's addressing everything these citizens have been saying. And, you know, it just went horribly wrong, in my opinion, after reading, because it's like when you read between the lines, you kind of read, there are some things that are really left out and misleading. So, you know, what's missing? Part here. Willingness within community to invest and do the work to improve their community themselves. So we're saying here that we need to do the work for our own communities. Like why? What is the point in me paying my share of property taxes and sales tax to this county when every district is supposed to come up with its own funding through private, through whatever, right? The money isn't going towards education. The money isn't going to education, to districts that severely need the funding. Where is the bulk of this money coming from or going to? So it also mentions how our county doesn't get all the, like, the reason why our funding for our education doesn't get a lot of the funding is because Elmore gets a majority of our sales tax. So for some reason, our sales tax, like, the reason like we're not getting all of it for our education is because it's going towards Elmore County. And then it's saying how, wish I could have prepared better for this, but it is what It's saying like Prattville should avoid build it and they will come endeavors, but we're choosing to do that anyways. It's saying that existing parks as well, like, need to be maintained over time, but we're choosing not to maintain certain parks and we're choosing to invest in new ones. It's saying that the stadium is owned and maintained by the City of Prattville but is used by Autaga County Schools. And it's also saying, you know, it brought up how we needed to create funding for a new And it's also saying how we need to invest in the highest cost-to-benefit ratio, and it'll encourage owners to, in these critical areas, to invest more compatibly in their ground. And so some of the Prattville's older.
Ma'am, if you will wrap up, we're running out of time.
This is the last part. Some of Prattville's older commercial districts and neighborhoods suffer from a lack of investment, which we're aware of, which is our historical districts, right? And this affects the lives of the neighborhood residents. They're saying that this affects the lives of the neighborhood residents. And in some instances, it's saying that it negatively impacts the people who just come by and see it, the visitors' impressions and the residents. So enforcing these property maintenances is through the nuances, like nuisance abatement ordinances, and it's encouraging private investment in these areas. And it's a collaborative and comprehensive strategy should be developed, each district and/or neighborhood involving public nonprofit or for-profit initiatives, which might include a combination. So it's basically saying that it's on the district themselves to come up with the funding for their district, which we all understand that some districts are at a disadvantage with the funding for themselves, and that's why they rely on the city. And if we can't provide that funding for them, then it's not equitable, like, it's not fair for them.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Y'all should read it. It's really eye-opening.
Yes, sir. If you will come forward, state your name and address for the council, and you will have three minutes to address us.
Yes, my name is Daniel Wood, and I live at 103 Sycamore Drive. I prepared several copies of documents here. I got about eight pages, if anybody wants one, I'd gladly give one out to you. Yeah, sure.
The first page that I got here is what I posted on Facebook, where I blasted your office the whole time you were in the red. And then I got a sales spreadsheet right behind it, which I ran my home number to verify your financial department as well. So on the first page is simply an organization chart, and if anybody out here would like it, you can have that.
The first one is, has three mistakes on it that I caught. I'm not a financial guy, but I know development is misspelled on the planning and development. I also know that accounting, accounts payable, and all this on the left side was not connected to finance, it's just hanging out in space on its own. It's under something, you need to put it under, I'm assuming, finance. And then over here on the right, you got Performance Arts and Parks and Recs, all being like the same entity when really they're subsets of the one above it. So it should be like drawn a little bit differently, as I have demonstrated, okay? But that's what my rant on Facebook was about. Now my rant about today is I've spent roughly 50 hours of my time over the last three weeks trying to verify the financial information, particularly pertaining to the one-cent sales tax. And I ran the calculations from the total sales and use tax revenue down to what we pay out, and then I calculated it backwards from the expense report I've got back to the total revenue. And my numbers didn't match, and that's a concern. The first thing I had to verify was how you actually get your numbers. So on Public's Record Request 2025-150, which is this page here, it shows that the sales tax on the one-cent bonds is only uses four different types of taxes. It uses rental tax, sales tax, sales tax from restaurants, and use tax, off the document here. So you add those together, and then you divide by three and a half, and you get the total amount of money that goes to the one-cent sales tax, okay? The three and a half cent, or three and a half is coming from the three and a half cent that the city gets, since it's a one-cent sales tax, it's just a simple ratio of one over three and a half, okay? So you add all that up, divide by three and a half, and you get your one-cent sales tax revenue. All right? If you look on the first sheet, when I got top-down calculation, you see that the total one-cent sales tax revenue is $9.5 million, 9.517. And then it breaks it down on the different buckets, on the reserves, the buckets, and how it's supposed to be broken down to an aggregate number. Y'all blessed me with information two weeks ago, saying the breakdown of the one-cent sales tax. I'm not questioning each individual bucket. I'm only questioning the one number that was on top of that handout on the one-cent sales tax, which was like 9.52 million dollars.
Mr. Wood, if you will wrap up quickly, your time is running out.
I understand. But when I calculated it from the bottom up, I used the expense report that is here, here, I'm sorry, and I ran the expense report back, and the numbers don't match. When you add up the expense report, you're off about $50,000 on the expenses versus the calculation from the revenue. I would love to know why. I know I can't ask questions, but that's why I blasted Daniel Oakley on Facebook. I will continue doing it. I will appreciate anybody in front of me to go over these numbers. I'm free to have a meeting anytime y'all want to. I don't, I'm not trying to bash nobody, I'm just trying to verify the numbers because you've already handed me a financial report that I've proven on the organization chart that is blatantly wrong, audited or unaudited, it's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
I'm Mary Adair, 1068 Street, Prattville, Alabama, 36067. And I signed up because I thought my girlfriend Barbara wasn't going to make it. So she's my girlfriend and my sister-in-law, and I had to get up and say something in her stead. Our North Highland reunion was held, and the people were overjoyed at being in the City of Prattville, they enjoyed. I got some information about the City of Prattville from the Chamber of Commerce, and they took it and went over it, and they were inspired by how Prattville is growing. But they were disappointed about North Highland Park, because they said, we were here two years ago, and the park was talked about, and we are back here two years later, and we see it's not finished. We see three other parks going up, and our park is still not finished. They weren't happy with that. And I'm also unhappy about the water flowing down from the hill down behind the property. I don't know what's going on with that, so I won't comment on that. But I am concerned about what's on the hill, because I'm under the hill. And if there's a flood coming down the hill, my house will be washed away. And I've been there since 1972, and I plan to stay there until I die, so I can give my other men to somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adair. Anyone further who wishes to speak this evening? Hearing none, let's move ahead. Mr. Mayor, do you have any closing comments? Counselor Sanders, closing comments? Counselor Jackson?
Yes, ma'am. Quickly, I just want to thank Dale and Paxton for addressing the candlestick issue. I had been down and talked with some of the residents there, and I reached out to them and just to see what type of plan they had with the tropical season, tropical storm season approaching. From some of my interactions with some of the residents there, they were very concerned about potential flooding. And I know Daniel and Paxton and their staff went out last week to fix a berm out there. So the residents are happy, and I hope in the future that we could possibly maybe sit down with some of our state legislatures and figure out some other potential ways to protect those residents moving forward. But hopefully, what they did last week will protect them from any further flooding. Also, I want to address, last meeting, I talked about the absentee balloting. Absentee ballots and issues, I just want to say there is no way a slight towards our wonderful ladies over here, Paula and her sidekick, they do a wonderful job. I was not saying that I was concerned about them, but I do understand, and I am concerned about some people that would like to potentially take advantage of the absentee ballot process. We all know about harvesting ballots and paying for ballots, that's one of the oldest tricks that have been used. And I know, like I said before in the last meeting, that there are some individuals that are very desperate to get some people into office and to get some people out of office. And I feel in my mind, well, not feel, I know that they will try to take advantage of that process. And like I was trying to discuss the other night on Facebook, make sure people understand what the law is concerning absentee balloting, and make sure that none of your loved ones, older citizens, none of your mentally disabled or being taken advantage by individuals out here with these absentee ballots. Because like I say, we know that there are some desperate people, and they may take some desperate measures. But what I said the other week was no way a knock on these two beautiful ladies over here. Thank you.
Counselor Chambers, closing comments?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Merrick?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Wayley?
Just quickly, so to the young lady that talked about the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, if I can help try to answer some of those questions that you had, I don't know that I can fully do that. I was on the Board of Zoning Adjustments for about 14 years and was involved in the review and the development of the review. I went to several of the meetings for public comment period for the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. There is a lot of information in that plan. There are a lot of ideas and strategies to move the city forward that are in that plan. I have stated from this position on a couple of different occasions, when we were considering rezoning issues, that, and one of them I voted against. I felt like it did not follow the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. So I'm glad somebody else has read it. So if I can help answer any of those questions or maybe get some of that information for you, feel free to reach out to me, my email and phone number on the website. Once again, I just wanted to state, I think it's commendable that what Mr. Bulger talked about tonight as far as a community action group. I'll be honest with you, some of the stuff that I see on social media causes me to not get on social media, because I look at it and I think, man, I don't live in a town like this. I don't live in a city where people spew hatred. To hear people talk about community members coming together to help other community members, I will support that in any way that I can individually, myself, and I will be glad.
be glad to help organize that, if that's what it takes. But there, there is a process, and there are ordinances, and they are giving notice ahead of time. And when there are no responses to that, then I think that the, the community at large expects me to see, as a council member, that the ordinances are followed. So if we can get in on the front end of that with a citizen action group, so that the government doesn't have to get involved, and we as private citizens are involved, and we go out, and, and we do what we're supposed to do, those of us that, that believe in Christ and proclaim to be followers of Christ, and if we will go out and we will get involved on the front end and help people, so that the government doesn't have to get involved, we will live in so much better city. So any way I can help with that, please let me know, and, and I'll be glad to do that.
Counselor Stritchett, closing comments?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind it when you, Mr. Bulger, discuss a way to, you know, tamp down some of this, especially in the summer, these yards that are just high grass, and because it does create, like you mentioned, you know, some people have to deal with snakes and rats on their yard, and, you know, it's, it's hard to find people sometime. People move and they leave their house abandoned, so like Michael was saying, there are ways that, you know, you have to follow procedure and follow the law, and that's what we do. And, but there's a way to curtail some of this. Mr. Bulger, I'd like to talk with you about that as well.
Our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be Tuesday, August the 19th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say yea. Opposed, nay. We are adjourned.